I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Pro Timor will be here shortly, I assume. Councilman Blair.
Present.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you for that. We just have one item on the study session today. Item 3A, please.
Presentation and Discussion of Total Compensation Study Findings and Recommendations in Introduction of Revised City Code Chapter 1-20.
Good afternoon, Mayor Members of the Council. Joyce Lyra with Human Resources. And today we're here to present the Total Compensation Study. And that was launched almost over a year ago. And due to the COVID, it got a little bit delayed. But we're happy to have Evergreen Solutions with us today. Dr. Jeffrey Ling and also Mark Holcomb. And they'll be here to present a little bit about why we wanted to launch this study. First, we wanted to make sure that we can recruit and retain the best and brightest of our employees. Also, we wanted to ensure that we had a competitive system, both internally and externally. And that we're competitive with the market. And finally, a really big reason is that we want to have something that's sustainable going forward into the future. I think that's really important for our employees to feel that they're paid well and that they have good benefits. And what we'll do today is Dr. Ling will talk to us about the results of the study and he'll make some recommendations. And then we'll come back in January and we'll have a full implementation plan. So a little bit about Dr. Ling. Dr. Jeffrey Ling is a partner with Evergreen Associates, a firm out of Tallahassee, Florida. It's a national firm with a book of business in 46 states and it specializes in public sector work. Dr. Ling was the principal on this project and has provided comp and benefit solutions and consulting services to employers for over 27 years. He uses a lot of creative methodologies and solutions in dealing with pay and many issues surrounding comp and benefits. Dr. Ling has a PhD in Political Science from Florida State University and is a Certified Compensation Professional. So with that, I'll introduce Dr. Ling.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Appreciate having the opportunity to present to you this afternoon. Mark will be assisting me with the PowerPoint. We did prepare a short PowerPoint that I believe is in your packet that summarizes some of the highlights of the report. I believe you've had a chance to receive a copy of the report. We don't want to go page by page in this workshop this afternoon, but we do want to touch on some of the most important elements for your consideration. If we take a look at what we've included in the presentation, I want to start off with a very brief snapshot of the study goals. What are the items that we were asked to take a look at and make up a best practice compensation and classification study? What are the project phases? We utilized four phases to conduct this work with your HR team as well as your employees. Talk about the employee meetings. A key part of our process is to involve your employees, not just in providing information related to the jobs that they perform and how they perform those jobs, but their perceptions, their concerns, their thoughts, their suggestions they might have in a process like this one. Want to talk about our review of your current system. What are some of the pros and cons of what you're doing currently? Move into how many employees or the degree to which employees participated in this process? And we had a very strong response from your employees as we conducted this study over the last year. Talk about the salary and benefit survey. Some of the high level things we learned from that data collection that we did with your peers. And then move into the solution options. The items for your consideration, as well as there's some extra steps that between now and really the middle of next year, we wanted to submit for your consideration as well. If we take a look at the study goals, what makes up a compensation classification study? Anytime you look at compensation classification, you're primarily interested in equity, as Joyce was good enough to mention in her opening comments. And there's two types of equity that we're most concerned about. One is internal equity, or the idea, am I compensated similar to individuals that perform similar work within the organization? The other type of equity is external. That's the idea if I leave the city and I go to work somewhere else, will I make more money, the same money, or less money than what I make here within the city? Based on those two areas of analysis, we attempt to identify what would be the best approach to increase the level of equity in the future. When we go into this process, we custom develop the solution that we provide to our clients. We don't provide the same thing here that we might have provided in Flagstaff when working with them, or even down in the Phoenix area, or even clients outside of Arizona that we might be working with. Every client receives something unique to them. And that's why it's so important and we're so appreciative of the efforts that your employees made to interact with us through this process and help us learn about you. Take a look at the next slide. It talks about the four phases that we conducted over the last year. We started off in January with employee meetings. Those meetings to ask employees what they thought about working here for the city, what brought them to the city, what are some of their concerns or suggestions as it relates to compensation, classification, benefits, recognition, rewards? Really what makes up the backbone of a strong compensation classification system. We also asked them to tell us a little bit about, if they had a magic wand, if you will, what would they change? What would make this a better place or more desirable place to work? We asked them to tell us if they talked to someone that was trying to decide between coming to work here and for another employer locally, what would you tell them would be the advantages of working here versus somewhere else? We also asked all of your employees to complete a job assessment tool or a survey about their job that asks them about what they do on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. We had a very strong response and I'll talk about that in a few moments. And we asked your supervisors to review their responses. The supervisors could not change any of the answers. They could simply see what the employees told us and they could indicate whether they agreed or disagreed. If they disagreed, we followed up with them to find out what the nature of that disagreement is. It's a relatively rare occurrence when disagreement does occur. It's usually less than 3% of the total response rate. But in each of those combinations of individuals, we would have reached out to them for any clarification. In classification, or Phase 2, we take a look at your overall design of your titling, your career path. So how do I move up with the organization over time? As well as the structure of how you divide work. And the purpose of that is really to determine what would be the best structure to identify in order to assign people for the work that they perform? What structure best meets your needs of especially incentivizing younger workers, millennials, Generation Z? They desire a career path even more strongly than other generational groups. What would you need to have in order to recruit them and retain them more effectively? And we also took a look at, are you signaling the market correctly by naming those jobs similar to what other employers do? And so as job titles change over time, we know that that occurs every so many years within almost every industry. If you have a title that's a little bit antiquated, sometimes employees don't recognize, oh, that's what they really want. They don't read the entire description sometimes when they see the announcement. And so that was all, those three elements went into that classification structure analysis. We also looked at the differences between jobs across departments. So you're a single employer, although you're made up of a very diverse group of tasks or services that you perform, it's important that people that perform similar work be compensated and classified in a similar manner. In Phase 3, we turn to compensation. We conducted a salary and benefit survey with your peers. I'll share with you in a few moments, we had a few challenges with the benefit survey primarily because of COVID. We'd completed the compensation piece or the pay piece before COVID. But I'll talk about what we learned related to that analysis and that data collection. Then we started looking at market positioning. Where do you fall on average versus your peers? And what effect does that have on your ability to recruit and retain? And then finally, the phase that we're in remaining today would be implementation options. What are the different alternatives you have as an organization to address the findings? And there's not a holy grail or secret weapon. There's not something that we can tell you this is the only way to move forward. There is some flexibility in what you can do and hopefully that's borne out in the report and I'll share some of that with you in the presentation today. And then the last piece is really reporting. And so Mark has been engaged in meeting with employees over the last two days. He'll continue to meet with employees tomorrow to explain to them how we use their information, to thank them for their participation, but also to answer the questions they have about the different alternatives that we're presenting to you. If we take a look at the fourth slide, we jump right into what did we hear from your employees approximately a year ago? And in almost every focus group that we conducted with employees, they shared with us, the number one thing that they like about the city is the culture. They like the environment, the work environment that's present here. Focus groups mentioned time and again that one of the reasons why they came and why they remain is the friendliness of the city, the positive relationship they have with their supervisor, and the positive relationships they have with their coworkers. All very important things that may not directly relate to my paycheck, but very critical on whether I remain with an organization over time. The second area was a little bit more divided and I'll share with you some concerns about benefits on the next slide. But on this slide, it's important to note that your employees indicated if they only have employee-only healthcare, that they're very happy with the option that you're offering. If they have a family, I'll talk to you in a few moments, they have a few more concerns. But for the employee-only option, they're very pleased with what you're offering them. And they're also very pleased with their retirement benefits. And again, we all recognize over the course of a career, what's important to me as an employee changes. As a younger worker, I'm thinking retirement's a long way off, or I'm thinking health insurance may not be quite as important. But as an employee ages or as the needs of their family change, retirement as well as health become critical elements for retaining workers that are within a municipal setting. The last piece is the location. And this is really something that goes well beyond the work of your individual departments, although the work of your departments are involved with this, but it rests considerably with this council. It's the actual environment and the makeup of this community. Many of the employees said, it's not just that I want to work here, I want to live here. I want to live and be part of this community because I'm proud of my community. I'm proud of the role that this municipality or this city plays within my community. And this is the place that I want to raise my family. If we take a look at some of the concerns, some of the concerns, number one was paid time off or the amount of paid time off that I can accrue over the course of a year. There were a number of employees that indicated that the total package of time off here for city employees is less than what they would receive in other locations. Now keep in mind, I'm still sharing with you perceptions. In a few moments, we'll talk about what we learned when we attempted to verify each of these things. But employees pretty uniformly, certainly.
You know, for people listening, as well as maybe edification from your point, PTO, explain that to me. It's above and beyond vacation hours, is it not?
Correct. So it is a combination of all paid time off. So I could utilize PTO or paid time off when I'm ill, when I'm on vacation, or for even other personal reasons that I might need to take time away from work. So it's a pool of time that I'm given as an employee in order to be absent, if you will, from my employment or from my job.
So did you say that this PTO is above the vacation days or is it combined?
It typically combines the vacation days.
Okay.
So PTO would be that whole set of days that would be offered. So in another jurisdiction where they have a separate pool for time off for vacation, separate pool for time off for sick, we would combine those together for comparison to where there's a PTO plan that combines both of those.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. The second most reoccurring concern is external equity, or that's market competitiveness. And that's the idea that if I went to work somewhere else depending on my job, my perception is I would make more. And it's very common in a study of this nature that employees would have concerns over what other cities, even private sector employers, might be paying in comparison to what they would receive here. And there's two components to that. We'll talk about both of those components this afternoon. One component is my earning potential. How much could I earn over the course of my career? The other is what's in my paycheck. And employees are very cognizant of both. 20 years ago, that information you had to find in the newspaper or you had to be lucky enough to have some type of technology at home. But today, that's a few use of your finger on your phone to find out what the neighbor jurisdiction's paying, what other organizations are paying. That information is much more transparent today. And so employees are very cognizant of what pay practices are in other jurisdictions or other employment opportunities. The last piece is cost of living. Employees indicated, and like many communities that has undergone the growth that you have here within the city, is that things are becoming more expensive. And as things become more expensive, they feel that their pay might not have kept pace with, especially the cost of housing. And among communities that undergo considerable growth, housing, rarely can you pick up the newspaper, watch the news, that housing is not one of the topics addressed. And your employees have the perception that it's becoming less affordable or harder to live within the city limits as a city employee than what it might have been in the past. If we take a look at the next slide, we did an analysis as well of your structure and your system. And this is the baseline that we work from. This is where we identify, if nothing changed and you went forward with what you have now, what are the pros and cons with that? That's really what we're looking at in a current system review. And the first thing is we found that the majority of the city employees are paid more than what would be expected based on their tenure or based on their time with the organization. Now, I'm not saying that you've overpaid all of your employees. That's not what that indicates. It's simply indicating that the progression that has occurred is better than what some of your peers would have in the form of progression. I'll show you a few graphics in a few moments that provides that information. So this is internal equity. This is the idea that if I've been with the organization longer, I've contributed more. There's a difference between myself and someone that has been here for a less period of time and contributed less. Also, we found a very strong positive relationship, as one would expect, between tenure and pay grade penetration. So how far I am in the range does relate to how long I've been present with the organization. And why that's important is in most jurisdictions that we work with throughout the country, number one or number two in that list of concerns that they have would be the idea of compression. Or the idea that I'm paid too close to someone that was hired more recently than I have been hired. So if Mark and I both worked for the same employer and the same job, and I've worked for that employer for one year and he's worked for that employer for five years, and we make the same amount of money, then the perception would be that there's compression present, that there should be some differential. Maybe not a formal egg differential, but there should be some differential between our pay based on the amount of time that we've been present with the organization. And the city has done a good job of addressing that in the past and ensuring that there is that gap present. Some of the weaknesses and some of the things that'll come out in a variety of the findings that I'll share with you this afternoon is that your range spread or that difference between the minimum and the maximum of your pay range. So this is not my take-home pay, this is my potential pay that I have, is a little bit more narrow than what your peers would typically have, not only locally but nationally. So your range spread is 40%, or that's the difference between the minimum and the maximum. Today, most organizations, especially municipal organizations your size, that's somewhere between 50 and 70%. So what does that mean for the average employee? What does that translate for them? What that means is their earning potential might be greater somewhere else. It may not mean that you're starting them off less than somewhere else. That's a different question. But if they remain with that organization over time, that upside may be a little bit greater somewhere else than what it would be here. In addition, what it results in is people reaching the maximum of their range and feeling stuck. And in any job, a job, in any organization, a job should have a maximum amount or maximum value for that job. It's not that every job has an infinite value that goes along with it. There is a market value at the minimum and there's a market value at the maximum. But when you have a very narrow range, you end up over time clustering people at the maximum. And many times that results in less engagement. I feel like I have nothing else to gain from working harder or it results in individuals coming into the workplace and having lower morale as a result. The second piece of that is you have a large number of pay grades. So because they're so small or so narrow, you have to have many more pay grades. And while that gives you flexibility, it also creates confusion. It also creates opportunities for decisions to be made that might be less than beneficial in the long term to the system. And it also creates opportunities for inconsistencies. And what happens there is when someone comes forward and says, I want to pay this employee a little bit more, we have so many pay grade options, we can move them to a different pay grade. And that might not be in the best interest of the organization because moving one person might impact more than one person. And so it's important to have a structure that better matches your, not only philosophy, but your operational needs. And you have many more pay grades than what you would need based on the division of work that's present within the organization. If we take a look at two graphics, they are a little bit busy, they're quite colorful, and a little bit hard to read from any distance. But the first one is a quartile analysis. And this is where we basically broken each of your current pay ranges. So this is your current structure into four equal segments. And we've looked at the employees that are present within each quartile. And typically what we would see, so beginning on the left-hand side with your lower pay grades, we would typically see more workers in lower pay grades in the first quartile or second quartile. So that red color represents the first quartile. And sure enough, we find what we would find in most organizations. Newer employees tend to enter the workforce in lower level positions and be promoted through the system over time. And they tend to turn over in those lower level occupations. Why is that? One, my goal typically in a lower level occupation is to be promoted, not to remain there forever. The second thing being you have much more price sensitivity to labor in lower paid occupations. Meaning, an extra 25 cents an hour from another employer means a whole lot more to me when I'm making $20,000 a year than what it would mean to me at $50,000 a year. And so as a result, you typically have a younger as well as newer workforce present in the lower level grades within your pay system. And we find that's the case. However, as we move from left to right on the graph, we find that the red begins to dissipate. And we end up with more green, which is the fourth quartile. That's people that have remained long enough with the city to move into the higher portion or that highest quartile within the range. And so what we find is compression, although some of your employees mentioned that, not in their top three, but some mentioned that, you don't have a significant amount of compression based on the quartile analysis. Another analysis that tells us more details about that would be the predicted actual or the predicted versus the actual, where we take a look at what is my take-home pay versus what on average, if I work somewhere else, my take-home pay would be. And this assumes over time, employees move between the minimum and the maximum within their pay range. And so in this case, red again would indicate that I'm not where I'm expected to be. So we have very little red present on that graph, where green, yellow, or the mustard color and purple indicates I'm at where I would expect it to be or better. And so this is where the statement came from on the previous slide about, we found that you're doing very well in progressing people through the ranges over time. And again, I cannot emphasize enough, nine times out of 10, when we work with a municipal organization anywhere in the country, that is not what we find. There is considerably more red that would be present on that graph than what's present here within the city. If we take a look at your employees' participation in the JATs. And so again, the JATs were the survey. 611 employees were asked to participate in the process. 476, or roughly 78%, took us up on that opportunity and completed everything. And roughly 80% or 488 provided at least some of the information necessary for the analysis. The probably more important statistic out of this is the 95.1%. That's how many of your permanent positions we receive data on. And as we go through this process, a question that comes up, and I'm sure Mark's been asked over the last two days, what happened to the folks that were in that 4.9% roughly? That didn't fill out a JT for their individual position? Were we thrown out? Were we still considered? And the short answer is you were still included, you were not thrown out. What we looked at is your job description and we liaised with your supervisor about any information that was necessary. But that is a very strong response, an 80% response from the source, from the expert in their jobs being the incumbent, is very good news for a process like this one. In fact, it represented 95% of the jobs is very good news. But even better, I would argue, is 92% or 440 of your supervisors took the time out of their day to sit down and review all their direct reports and provide feedback to us. I can tell you that number is many, many times closer to 60%. So your supervisors took this process very seriously. Again, what they're giving us is whether they agree or disagree. They can't change any answers. All they're telling us is do they agree or disagree with what the employees gave us? And the vast majority of your supervisors agreed. If we take a look at the salary survey, so now turning externally and looking at your market peers, we ended up surveying a slightly different sample for public safety versus your general peers. We had 37 combined responses that we received as part of that process on salary. We asked questions about their ranges, about the average actual or what the paychecks actually are, as well as some information about their structure. And we did adjust for cost of living. We recognized that cost of living is different in different communities within Arizona, just like the rest of the country. And we looked at 70 jobs specifically. And those 70 jobs served as the basis for the model to estimate the pay or the appropriate pay in the other jobs that were not included as benchmarks. As I mentioned before, the benefit survey happened to coincide with the beginning of COVID. And so we had seven responses out of the 37. That survey is considerably longer. The salary survey typically takes somewhere between four and six hours for one of your peers to complete. The benefit survey, we're told by respondents, is closer to 12 to 15 hours, given the detailed information we're asking for. You have many peers that indicated they wanted to participate, but they simply said, we can't handle the influx of moving people to telecommuting and dealing with all the demands we have related to COVID and fill out this detailed of a survey. And so we reached the point of seven and at that point, we let HR know that that's a sufficient sample to draw some conclusions. But the timing is what prevented us from increasing that number. If we take a look at what did we learn related to salary? So this is a comparison of the salary ranges. Negatives within this table indicates the distance between your average amount among that employee group for the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum and the average for the peers that responded. And so negative 7%, negative 8%, negative 9% would be the percent difference between your average value for those components of your ranges versus your peers. It's important to keep in mind though, when you look at those numbers, that there's just about a 5% error rate. And that 5% is made up by differences in pay practices, differences in structures. No organization does their pay practices exactly the same as everyone else. And the reason being is they each want to compete. So they try to figure out what can I do that's slightly different that would make me more competitive or more desirable as an employer. So the midpoint is important to us as well because the midpoint is a stationary point in the middle of their pay ranges. So if they have wider ranges or more narrow ranges than what would be present here at the city, the midpoint would be that center point regardless. And so that negative 8% for general employees tell us that you're basically one cycle behind where your peers are at on average. As you look through the report, what you'll find, and as you deliberate going forward, some jobs would be better than the negative 8%. Some would be worse, some would be right at that mark. And that's typical. It's very unusual for us to find all jobs are at the average. Many times you have been more competitive in some areas than others or some departments than others. With fire, similar type of analysis as well as police, across the fire and police jobs, although a smaller number of jobs are considered versus the general employees, what we find is you're relatively competitive when you bring someone new in in fire and police, but as they're promoted over time, you lose some of your competitiveness. And so we've made a series of recommendations related to that as well. The other thing that's important to keep in mind that we noticed from the data is with general employees, you'll notice you go from negative 7 to negative 8 to negative 9. And typically, there would be more consistency in that positioning. And why you have a deteriorating or slightly deteriorating market position for general employees is the limited nature of your ranges. So if you remember on the previous slide, we talked about you're at 40%. Most people are at 50 to 70. So when we look at that, what we're finding is there is a little bit more room at the top among your peers, among their general employees, or what they set their maximum at. Keep in mind too, that as you review this information, as you look at it, what we're presenting to you today is primarily what you do with the structure. So how do you position your structure to address as many of these needs as possible? In the report and in the implementation plans would be how these overall recommendations would impact individual employees. That's something that's a separate cover versus what we're presenting to you today. If you take a look at the next slide, the benefits results, we've highlighted here the healthcare as well as the leave time. The detailed report goes through each of the major benefits categories. So with healthcare, what we found is that you're very competitive with your individual employee-only coverage that you're offering. That's your free option where most of your peers are somewhere between $10 and $45 per month. Some do have free as well, but many charge a small amount for that employee-only coverage. With the family plans, we find that you're one of the most or one of the more expensive providers. You currently, or more expensive options, for your higher level plan at $693 per month that the employee would be taking on for covering themselves through your higher plan and family coverage. With your leave time, we found that the market average is approximately 250 hours of combined sick, vacation, or all types of leave. Right now, the city is at 162 hours. So employees were correct, there is a differential in comparison to your peers in regards to the amount of time off. Why that is important is, as I mentioned before, engagement, morale, your ability to recruit. As employees become more cognizant of what other jurisdictions are doing, as that becomes more transparent, it's not that they have to find it in the newspaper or call a friend in another jurisdiction. Much of this information is online, so it's very easy for them to identify. Different organizations that we compared you to do have different structures. So coming back to Councilmember Blair's question from before, not all of them utilize PTO. Some combine traditional sick and vacation together. Some have time off leave pools. Some have something that's a little bit looser than what a formal PTO program would be. They simply allocate time and people can take time against that. But again, what we were looking for is that total amount of time that's given versus the total amount of time that you offer. The solution options. So focusing on compensation and focusing on your structure, we identified three different options for your consideration. The first option, bring to minimum, would really ensure that all employees follow the new plan. So all it simply does is moves everyone that doesn't make the minimum of the appropriate range up to the minimum of that range. And so for example, if you have one employee that is making $20,000, another that's making $25,000, and they both go in a range that pays $30,000, at the end of option one, they both will make $30,000. That differential between them today will be lost in option one. So what option one is many times presented as is the floor. That's just get everyone on the plan so you have everyone in place. But it significantly increases compression many times because you're taking everyone that falls below a certain point and you're putting them in exactly the same place. Option two and three give you two different alternatives to maintain that distance that exists between employees. And so option two measures the distance between my current pay and the midpoint in my current range. It indexes that number and then recreates that same distance in the new pay plan. And that same distance would not just be myself versus the midpoint, but myself versus my peers as well. And so it takes into account where I fall versus my coworkers, where I fall versus other people that perform the same work in other departments, and it maintains that distance, but in the new pay plan. Option three discounts my current pay slightly. It is many times utilized or adopted as an incremental step or cost-saving measure, especially when you move your ranges up because of a market differential, like we found present here within the city. And it still maintains that distance. I still have a distance with my peers. I still have a fixed distance with the midpoint within my new range, but it's slightly less than what it would be in option two. And so again, we're preserving that value of the differential or the distance, but we're not incurring as great a cost in that one time or one brush stroke implementation as we would with option two. If we take a look at the cost, the total cost column there indicates- If we take a look at the cost, the total cost column there indicates 183,000 of reoccurring salary dollars that would be necessary to implement the bring to minimum. And so to bring everyone up to that minimum of their new proposed range would be roughly $183,000. If we utilize the discounted comp ratio, that slight discount of my current pay and then calculating the differential, it's a $1.1 million reoccurring cost. And if we subtract out the 183, there's $917,000 difference. So that's the investment we're making in ensuring we're preserving that distance between people. Or if you were to implement the entire comp ratio based on your current structure, it would be 2.3 million. Or if we remove the impact of the bring to minimum, it would be 2.1. That would be utilizing to preserve the complete differential that exists between people within the organization today. How does this roll out to employees or how does this affect employees? So the number of employees in the study are 488. Number of employees receiving market adjustments would be 385, or roughly 79%. The average dollar increase would be just about $2,800 or about a 5.3% increase at the point of implementation. And the pay-for-performance system that you'll be looking to put into place beginning next year, 46 employees would be included in that group. That would include your department directors as well as their direct reports that would move over to your your performance initiative that you'll be utilizing. We're also recommending some city code revisions. Part of our comparison also looks at your policies and practices in human resources. Many of your peers, not just within Arizona, but nationwide, have been looking at opportunities to streamline or consolidate some of their current city code that relates to human resources to increase flexibility, but also to ensure that decision-makers are able to be responsive to events that occur on a day-to-day basis. And so I believe some work has been done that identified that your 17 pages could be reduced to two, and I believe Prescott Valley went through that process. Sedona has gone through that process recently. I would also give you the ability to implement some more progressive practices. And so many times what happens with city code-based human resource practices, something goes in the books, and it can be years and years before that's looked at again. Many of the clients we work with tell us, well, this is our policy, but it's from 1983. It's not what we really do anymore, but it's so hard to change it. We still have it captured in city code, although this is what we're doing in practice. We would recommend that incorporate the compensation and benefits changes that would come out of the study as well as various administrative recommendations. And so part of that consolidation would be eliminating overlap, ensuring that contradictory information is not preserved, and removing those outdated practices. Again, employees typically are not privy to this type of information today, but it's something that does impact the day-to-day life of your employees based on how this information is employed or utilized on a regular basis. We would recommend that you incorporate the existing code details into administrative regulations and based on your form of governance, that you would provide the authority for human resource administration to the city manager. And that's the most common practice in government styles of your type. If we take a look at how to move forward or the recommendations to put the option in place or the option that we've identified in place, we would recommend that you adopt the pay plan as proposed. It's displayed in your final report, and that goes into some detail of the structure as well as the design. The second option or that discounted comp ratio implementation for general and public safety employees, we feel like meets the majority of your needs. Again, the key to implementing something like this is to address your ability to recruit as well as your ability to retain. And we feel like you address enough of the concerns and enough of the issues that you're facing with that middle option that you can accomplish what you desire to accomplish. We are recommending, as I mentioned, that you move the department directors and their direct reports over to the pay-for-performance system. And then among those employees that are not included in the implementation, that they receive a cost of living increase or CPI plus 1%. And so that you move to a planned structure review process linked to CPI. This was something that became a very prevailing practice up until the time of the pandemic. So if you look at after the Great Recession and the recovery that occurred, labor, the cost of labor went up considerably for local government throughout the country. And so it's important that you have some type of recognized and easily accessible metric that you're utilizing to gauge what is the difference between myself and the peers that I'm competing against. We are recommending that you adopt the benefits recommendations detailed in the final report. The time off accrual rate would be the first option or the first recommendation to consider. There are some others that are included in there that will take more time. And there are potential cost savings that could come out of some of those other benefits recommendations, but they're not something that can be implemented all at once. There's something that will require some research and effort on the part of HR and city staff. And we're recommending that move PTO and other administrative items over to the city, out of the city code and over to delegating responsibilities to the city manager, as I mentioned on the last slide. So what are the next steps? How would you move forward with a process like this one? We're in November. We're finalizing the implementation plan. We're conducting this presentation. Approval will come up in January, as Joyce mentioned to you. Alternative will need to be selected or how you'd like to move forward. That alternative will need to be communicated, although we're sharing with employees over these three days what the options are. At some point in time in the future, HR, the department directors, other staff will need to meet with employees and answer their questions again in regards to the final alternative that's selected. The leadership will need to push forward with the pay-for-performance plan that they have, and there will need to be a series of employee meetings. Anytime you change your structure or you change some of your pay practices, it's very important to hold meetings where employees can not only hear the message, but ask questions directly of those in charge of implementing the change. Then in January, the city would seek to finalize the PTO annual accrual plan. And then February would be revising the job descriptions, addressing any new career paths, revising the structure, and train HR on the JAT and compensation system. So this is where in order for our clients to maintain the system over time, we provide free of charge to them with no obligation or agreement, two software packages that help them maintain it, and we also provide half a day of training. And then Joyce and her staff will be able to participate in a series of updates we do roughly quarterly. Again, no charge for that. That's something we provide to all of our clients and have over our 16-year history. And then the last piece would really be in July of 2021, where the medical plans could be looked at. You're involved in a trust as it relates to your health insurance, and you could begin to look at what adjustments would you need to make in order to address that differential that we found related to, especially the family or the higher-value family coverage plan that you're offering today. So I know that was a lot of information, and I went through it a little bit quickly, but we'd be happy to entertain any questions or to revisit slides in more detail if you would like.
That was a great presentation. Thank you so much for your work, and it was a good summary. I know there's a lot of work that went into this, and it's nice to actually have you here. And Joyce, thank you and your team for your work on this. It's encouraging to see the amount of engagement from our employees, and I'm not really surprised by that, honestly. It's also good to hear about the culture. I think that's probably the most important thing there is. And it's kind of what I assumed, is we have a good culture. We can live in a great place. So this seems like a missing piece, if you will, to kind of fix this pay issue. So again, great presentation. Thank you. Councilman Blair?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, but I'm not quite sure how to distill them down. Probably one of the things that I can bring is the fact that I used to be a city employee and, you know, private businessman now. But I would have to say to Mark or Joyce or you folks that at some point in time, there's more value to certain employees within the system to have paid time off opposed to having salary increases. Have you looked at any variables that adjust or look at both of those? I know that by looking at how I treat my employees based upon how much time they get off as far as vacation, it's based upon years of service to a certain point. And then they're given, which we have, 10 days of holidays. So now you're looking at where somebody might have 10 paid days off for vacation and, you know, 10 for holidays, so they have 20 days paid off for the year. At what point in time here do we at the city, and I don't know, are we still paying vacation based upon years of service or how does that work? I've lost track of how that functions.
Yeah, right now it is based on years of service. It's basically a matrix. So we will be looking at that, and we will be looking at making some adjustments. And to your point, we'll look at new people who are coming on as well, and how much differential, if any, do we give to someone who just started versus someone who's been here for quite a while?
Okay. And I'm just, you know, concerned about the one point in time, we had an unlimited amount that can be accrued, and then if somebody were to retire, then they could get paid for all those hours and all that time that they had to where, in my case, either every year, either you use it or I pay you out of it.
We cap that now, 240.
Okay. And I guess, Mark, to you, when you start talking about pay raises to the community and the suggestion of going up to the minimum, what does that mean cost-wise overall? Is what you suggested the minimum or the maximum? Or how do we look at those different departments?
Pull up the slide again. The overall cost slide?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We rolled through that pretty quick.
Yeah, it's good for everybody to understand.
It's a number that we're going to have to agree to, and certainly I personally believe our employees, I hate the word deserve, but have worked to have the ability to receive what they've worked for. I don't think anybody deserves anything, but when you're working for an employer, you have to provide something to get paid for something.
Yeah, and so if we're looking at the discounted comp ratio, which is what's being recommended, that's 1.1 million. And again, big number. Obviously, a million's always a big number, but we do need to keep it in perspective. We currently have $33 million worth of salary that we pay in a year. So that's about a 3% increase in our overall salary budget. About 850,000 of that is in the general fund because a lot of this centers around police and fire, with the others being in the other funds. Total cost, even with benefits, though, that's just the salary number up there, is 1.3 million. So it's still, again, well within that 3% of our overall budget to implement this at the discounted rate.
I guess to finish up at that point, what I'm hearing is that brings us to where we're competitive with the communities that you use as comparables.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the idea would be then that we don't have to go through this again for a very long period of time because
That's good.
the pay ranges will be broader, and they will also be adjusted annually based on inflationary adjustments. So we shouldn't be facing looking at this anytime in the foreseeable future.
As long as we keep the separations at class.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Other questions, comments from the council? All right. Yeah, no, great job. Yeah, great presentation. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor, if you would give me the discretion to just talk to Mark. I asked yesterday, how is the feedback with the employee committees going? Could you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely. So I've been conducting sessions yesterday and as well as some sessions this morning on Zoom. We've had excellent turnouts overall. I think yesterday we had a few dozen employees attending across multiple sessions. And this morning on Zoom, I think we've had more than 150 employees attending across two sessions. So we definitely had good participation. I ran through a very similar presentation to this, although we took out a couple of the more detail-oriented slides. Employees have overall received it well. There's been great feedback. We've had some questions just for employees asking us to clarify what some of the things meant. But overall, I think employees have been excited. Employees in the in-person sessions, there was certainly a lot of nodding when we talked about the employee meetings. And I know I was here last year in this same council room giving these sessions. So some of the same employees have come back and have really stayed engaged over the course of the year. So I think the feedback has been great. The employees have been participating and seem to be on board and understanding what we're explaining.
Thank you, Mark. I just thought that was important for you guys to hear.
If the council moves ahead with this, when do we move ahead with it? And when do the actual employees feel a bump in their pocketbook?
The implementation from a dollars and cents and a budgetary perspective would be the first of July. And you guys would revisit this and vote one way or the other in January, this January.
Councilmember Rusin?
Oh, I was just going to comment that in this day and age of COVID, that we seem our budget seems to be hanging in there pretty well, and these new numbers wouldn't be implemented until the next fiscal year. And also, I just want to comment that I believe that the city needs to be competitive in order to attract and maintain our wonderful, talented staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Very good. Anything else? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, one of the things I like is the suggestion that our city manager would take over or have the most influence over the PTO. I think it's very hard for policymakers to make those kinds of decisions, and I think you have a better grasp of where everybody is.
I appreciate that. Mayor Proton, and one of the things you will be seeing in 2022 is once this class and comp adjustment is done, and I think most of you are supportive of this, I want to push merit down all the way to frontline supervisors as a decision-making about paper performance and, you know, making distinctions between excellent performance, okay performance, and not so good. I do think we need a year of training. It's unfair to give that kind of discretion to frontline supervisors without giving them some background about how you go about that because it's not something that they've been taught.
One last thing. When you're talking about that merit, are you going to be analyzing the fact or how legal it might be to give merit increases instead of it being on their paycheck, but a bonus structure to where you give them an award for being in a
We've talked a little bit about that, and there is a possibility we could explore, you know, one-time bonuses also. I think, you know, the more impactful going forward for an employee is for their salary to go up, but there are instances where having that flexibility and rewarding one and off premium performance is something we could look at.
I think it's important to have that at least as a suggestion because you might have three or four employees across, you know, the 500 or 600 that excel above their pay grade, but you can give them a one-time bonus.
And I know one thing that was really important to you, Councilman Blair, is if you have an excellent performer who is reaching our, close to our maximum under the existing system, and you can't give them any more incentives financially to stay in their job, that's a problem. And we have created with this new system broader, wider pay ranges, so you're not up against your maximum. And if you're an excellent person and an excellent performer in the specific job you have, you have the flexibility to get additional merit increases.
I think that needs to happen because in the real world, if you're up to performance level five in the city of Prescott and you're a wastewater engineer, and you have a private company that comes to you and says, well, you know, I'm going to pay you one step higher, and we as a city look at one another and go, wait a minute, we want to keep his knowledge and his ability. We can't be frozen to the point where we look at that employee and say, we're not going to offer you anymore.
You're right.
All right, any other comments? Well, thank you, Michael, Joyce, Doctor, for your work and all those employees out there that have been involved with us. Appreciate, appreciate the efforts. This meeting is adjourned.